Officially call the meeting to order at 6:07 PM. Sorry. Okay. Roll call please. Simmons.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Blackman. Paredes.
Here.
Moore.
Here and the board is present. I'd like a motion please to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second. Yes. Roll call please. Briggs. Yes. Paredes.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Simmons.
Yes.
Blackman.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Motion passed with the meeting in executive session for some time now.
At least fifty.
At least fifty minutes. We'll be out before seven. Okay? Okay. I'd like to officially resume our board meeting at 7:21 PM. Can I have your roll call please? Okay, Paredes.
Here.
Nelson. With you Cameron.
Here.
Briggs. Uh, here. Blackman.
Here.
Simmons.
Present.
Moore. Present and up. First item on the agenda includes audience comment. I don't think there was anyone that had signed up. Is there anyone who wanted to sign up and just didn't get the chance? Next item on the agenda then Heatherville Green Team's student analysis.
We're going to have to recognize our students from Heatherville tonight. I'm really excited about the work they've done. Our progress is coming up. I'll share a little bit of information. We're actually recognizing two groups from Heatherville. Again, just great work that they're doing. We appreciate the students and staff and the president.
In addition to more education, Dr. Smith and cabinet, Heatherville embarked on a journey to create morning announcements for more enjoyable, visible to our students. As well as we want to give us even more flexibility around designing announcements around the morning routines. Thus, our video announcements team was formed. So twenty-three fifth graders signed up for video announcements rotated by threes each month to record announcements every day. That would be broadcasted to the entire school. As well as we're able to involve a speed class within this process as well. So one of the great things that I'm not sure where I established is obviously a charter school in Indiana who has kind of looked at this process and wants to replicate it at their school as well. So, but what I want to do today is we have three students who took this among themselves and took this program over. And they gave up their recess and their lunchtime to come in, bothered to eat their lunch to record these videos to make sure that we created this similar enjoyment for students. So has a little music to it, has bloopers, has video, things like that. So I'm going to be able to show you a minute of it and then I'll recognize those three students. So we'll just show the first one of our morning announcements. This happens every morning. They put a lot of time and effort into it. So I'll show the first minute of it. Today's announcement.
Heather, morning announcement. Today is Monday, January twenty-second. All morning cheer high. The cool tool for this week is kindness and contentment. This cool tool helps to establish positive atmosphere in classrooms and teach respect for others.
Today's lunch is a cheeseburger, french fries, celery sticks, and a fresh pear. Please inform your teacher if you need a hot lunch. Happy birthday to Chelsea Bullitt, Cardale Donald White, Madeline Mays, and Adora Gudino Noel Doos. We hope you enjoy your special day this week.
Heatherville PTO is proud to present Tyson TRS, our third annual Daddy Garden Day. The festivities will take place on Friday, January twenty-sixth from six thirty to eight thirty P.O. It will be an unforgettable night for the fathers, father figures, and princesses of Heatherville. We hope to see you all there.
Today's events are the analysis three fifteen to four fifteen. Our monthly PBIS report is coming up. Make sure you are reaching your classroom goals so you can join us. Registration is open for this year's Girls on the Run team. All third through fifth grade girls are welcome to join. Practices will be Monday to Tuesday from three fifteen to four thirty. Starting the end of March, any questions, please let me know in your document.
If you sign up to be in the Black History Program, make sure you are running your lines. If you are doing the following phones, your rehearsal is every Wednesday from eleven fifty through twelve thirty. If you are doing the following phones, your rehearsal is every Thursday from eleven fifty through twelve thirty.
Would you love to go to my adapter meeting?
Yeah!
Well, you might be too young. Our school-wide goal is to find days without classroom quarrels. Work together to reach our goal. The mission of Heatherville Schools is to develop and raise the diversity skills of each child. We will advance academic growth, make the highest expectations, and nurture and inspire a love of learning.
Please stand and join us, Heather, who has pledged allegiance to the spirit of its pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Wait a minute, Madeline, I think.
I got a couple of videos short, but you also have character play, you have inspirational videos. I'm excited to get them. So these three students, they are the producers of this entire program that we do every day. And so I just want to honor Najee King, Benjamin Peet, and Mathis Tyrone for all the great work they do. They train all the other. I want to get those students, the other fifth graders that come in and assist. They train all of them and make sure our recordings are done right and everything. So they just do a wonderful job and I truly appreciate it.
Great work, gentlemen.
Great job.
Alright, so once you guys come over here. You guys will stay right there. Alright, so turn around, face the parents. So I can't even, can't even get it.
Hard to see.
Turn y'all certificates around. Um, so that's good? Alright.
And thanks to have our wonderful Green Team, they have some exciting things that they were able to get accomplished. So I have Mrs. Mallor from the Lisa Green Team, my her team, that come up and discuss some of the great happenings today at Heatherville Park, our Green Team.
Good evening, Dr. Smith and Board of Education. Thank you for inviting us to board meeting tonight. We'd like to thank Dr. Davis for his unending encouragement in our pursuits for greenness school. I'm Joan Mallor, one of the faculty advisors for the Green Team. The other faculty advisors are Beth Nicolai Chen and Ryan Kirk. Our wonderful Green Team members, who are going to speak very loudly tonight, are Kai Brown, Grace Taylor, Michael Franklin, Destiny Burks, Clark Barnett, Isaiah Tompkins, Bryce Stewart, Benjamin Peet, Mathis Tyrone, and Lily Keston. The Heatherville Hill Green Team is a group of ten fifth graders from Mr. Zerwanka, Mr. Radeke, and Mrs. Ess's classrooms. This is our recycling center. We collect printer cartridges, water bottles, bottle caps, pop tops, cell phones, magazines, clean lunch trays, and plastic, plastic bins. These items are recycled.
Hi, my name is Grace. This is our. Hi, my name is Grace. This is, this is additional laundry and safety for our new old tree. It will, it's what, painted by the good. I'll probably, you will help see that.
Hi, my name is Michael. Our weekly jobs include connecting paper from around the school and bringing it to the van outside. Every classroom has a recycling van, including the office and the teachers' workroom. This job can be very hard on a Wednesday.
Hi, my name is Grace. Wait one second. I'm going to speak for Lily since she wasn't able to be here tonight. Lily is a great recycler. When items are not correctly recycled, we go around to the classrooms to remind them what should be put in the green bins.
Hi, my name is Destiny. At the beginning of the year, we noticed that Sears had changed from cardboard trays to styrofoam trays. We were very upset. The cardboard trays are recyclable and styrofoam trays are not. Also, we, also we collect the plain cardboard trays and give them to local vendors to use efficiently.
Hi, my name is Claire. We decided to write a letter to Sears to convince them to switch back to cardboard trays. First, we used our iPads to research the dangers of styrofoam being applied. Styrofoam never goes away and thirty percent of our landfills are filled with styrofoam. We also found out that small doses of chemicals can damage the teeth of styrofoam containers.
Hi, my name is Isaiah. Next, we wrote a letter to Ms. Tandler, the regional manager from the Sears food group. This is part of the letter. This year, you switched to styrofoam trays. We have a huge problem with that. While we understand that styrofoam is less expensive than cardboard, there are many environmental issues related to the use of these, of this material. First, styrofoam is not biodegradable or recyclable. Styrofoam fills thirty percent of our landfills and never goes away. Next, the factories that make styrofoam cause air pollution and toxic waste throughout our environment. Styrofoam is made from oil, a non-renewable resource. Once that resource is gone, there is no more. Last, but most important, we, small doses of chemicals can get into the food from the styrofoam trays. The students put their hot food on the trays, the chemicals are getting into their food. In conclusion, we would like you to consider switching back to cardboard trays. It's better for the environment and better for our world. We await your reply.
Hi, my name is Bryce. Thanks for receiving the response from Ms. Tandler. We were very excited and hopeful that she would make the change. Part of the email said, "I did receive your email with a letter of concern about the use of styrofoam trays this year." Sears appreciates the feedback and understands the concern of the use of styrofoam by five regrettable phone trays. As you mentioned, yes, the cost of paper trays is more expensive than the cost of a category over the past couple of years. We were looking for options to help us cost by switching to the foam trays. I am currently working with our pre-plank vendor to see if they can work with us to lower the cost of the cardboard trays for Blossmore District. They will get back to me today with more information about the cost. In the meantime, I am also trying to source other options that are within the budget. Once again, thank you for reading off to Sears about you and your Green Team concerns. I'll be back in touch as soon as I learn more about any chance of that being changed, possibly made. Many people thought we should just be happy to get a response and we should not expect Sears to change the trays.
Hi, my name is Tiffany. We decided to write another letter if we did not hear from Ms. Tandler. But after winter break, we received this email. This is part of the email. I am just falling in love with you and your team in regards to the use of the styrofoam tray concerns. I'm pleased to let you know that we are, that we were able to secure cardboard tray at a little bit of a lower cost to us. Although still more expensive than the current trays. We understand the concern and wanted to be considerate of the concern and respond accordingly. We spent time working with vendors to be able to provide the cardboard trays at a cost that's a little more affordable. We appreciate the letter and are always looking for feedback. The trays should start the end of this week, if not early next week. Please let us know if you will have any further concerns or questions.
Hi, my name is Mathis. We are very excited that Sears changed back to cardboard trays. The cardboard trays are now being used at every school in our district. We will, we, we will be able to give them to local vendors. From this experience, we have learned that styrofoam is dangerous to their environment. We have also learned that if we are persistent and keep trying, we can be successful. We have learned not to be afraid to do better. We made a difference. We will end by with the quote by Margaret Mead, "All together."
Never be that few caring people can change the world. For indeed, that's all you ever have.
Do you want the coaches too?
Please, come on.
Sorry.
Good job. Really great job.
Come on, guys. Just go out and call. Okay. We're all done. Okay, we will be moving on the agenda. Dr. Smith, you can leave the Heatherville Green Team.
Possible. That's absolutely possible, but I think, you know, fresh off of the MLK Day on and the importance of those learning opportunities for students and to see more of the Green Team has done, those are experiences that we stayed with for children for years. And we'll be able to apply those lessons in other areas. So I'm really proud of the Heatherville students and staffs. Just a number of beer activities scheduled in District 161 this week. Excited to join Western Avenue PTO tomorrow evening, followed by the Parker Junior High PTO on Wednesday as well. This Thursday, we're presenting a parent university on the research, motivation, and coaching strategies for executive functioning skills. And it's actually really good timing, as we identified in our recent joint administrative meeting with Districts 153, 167, and 233. As students get to Home with Blossmore High School, the executive functioning skills, study of organization, et cetera, have been lacking. So it is an opportunity for us to directly address, you know, some skills that are still in need later on in our academic careers. Really keeping up with that collaboration, tomorrow we're meeting with our local governmental leaders, Park District, Village, et cetera, just to review what's happening in the Home with Blossmore area. Just about once a month, the meetings are very valuable to identify our shared goals in various ways we can work together for the success of our entire community. On the items on our agenda, the communication, the management position that came out of this meeting construction. But again, this is on the heels of the shared leadership meeting that we had last week, with a lot of really good conversations. As it has been this year, it's really focused on specifically map instruction on our students' pathways, not only through the local middle school and junior high, but also, once they get to Home with Blossmore, what does that look like? So really a lot of good conversation that we will end up reviewing, operationalizing, and putting to the board for further review in the next several meetings. Just to follow up on a letter that went home last Friday to our families at Serena Hills, and we should, and also to all of you, showed some information on the increase in student absences in Serena last week. Very happy to report today that the absences are in the normal range for this time of year. Still a number of students who have, who are out for almost nothing compared to last Friday. We're going to continue with our aggressive cleaning protocol to provide a safe and durable environment for those students, parent and staff members, and that includes using non-technical cleaning supplies that we don't typically roll out, but are certain called for this time. Really want to encourage everyone to practice proper hand washing techniques and use the appropriate supplies when they're cleaning materials, homes, et cetera. We're finishing up Serena Hills heading to Parker and then to the rest of the elementarys to try to make sure that everyone had another spike in student absences. That's it, remember?
Any questions or comments for Dr. Smith? I'm tied up on the agenda for the board topics. Any questions? Concerns? Anything missing? People would like to add? No? Next item on the agenda, Parker Junior High School, academics and discipline evaluation. Try to move the picture that's away. Do you have a different one? Okay.
Are you not moving? They just.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, School Board members. We are, we had many things as far as to be proud of that we had Parker. From students participating in community service projects, to team, to team going prior to downstate. We also had some challenges. As a school community, we are working hard as far as to change the narrative around Parker Junior High. I'm thankful for our Parker staff, and some are here tonight. And I'm very happy to have two amazing assistant principals to help me as far as in this, uh, work. And so, in an effort to learn more about Parker, before the school year started, we had focus groups. And so, again, the focus group was to learn more about Parker and begin to create a shared vision with our community stakeholders. And so, so we had focus groups with our students in which they really appreciated their voices being heard, along with our staff and parents. And so, you see here as far as some common themes from our focus groups. And so, talking about consistent communication, consistent clear communication as far as between home and school, visible, sensible administration. And so, also a welcoming environment. A lot of people talking about an insular spirit across the board, even as far as with the students in terms of high academic standards. And so, we heard that as far as from all of us. And then also a desire as far as to see more self-advancement as far as celebrating our students. And so, so those were some things, those were overall things in which we saw from our students, parents, and staff. There were some other pieces that, that came out, but these were consistent in all three of those groups. So what's new as far as at, at Parker? And so, as you know, we have a new math curriculum, and our math department is excited about the new math curriculum. The maximum mistake is rigorous. It was challenging, and so they're enjoying teaching it and their learning as far as through the process. Along with that, we continue to have home room pressure development as far as to help in that area. So we structured enrichment time, and so we looked at that in order to address our needs in order to have more time focused on learning. We also created a grade level after-school homework help. And again, focus on having our students prepare as far as the next up. And so, we wanted to have qualified staff to be able to support our students after school. And so, that happens Tuesday through Thursday. And so, again, just looking at the school climate, just having a strong focus on PBIS. And here you see a picture of learning activities. Our staff worked to develop color wars, and so this was to build teamwork. And so, you see the two students working along with another student, pushing them along, and they compete as home room teams. And so, it's been a fun activity as far as for us, and students are excited to come to Parker, particularly as far as even more on the days in which we have our color wars. Thursdays, we had College Day at Parker, and so all of our staff and students were at the college here. And during the announcements, we featured a college a week. And so, again, we want to plant that seed for higher education. And again, just to build school spirit, we had Spirit Day as far as on Fridays. And then, again, we increased our celebrations during the color wars, PBIS. And we are happy to announce that J C Y Company will be coming to Parker for one of our PBIS celebrations coming up next month. And so, also what's new, we have community service learning projects, which is in collaboration with different schools as far as. And Ms. Hartman, she'll share a little bit more about that.
So our community service learning project is something that was developed in collaboration between Parker, James Hart, and HF. So Maggie Beck is from the Village of Blossmore approached me for ideas on how we could sort of unite the three schools in a mission to really push the idea of kindness and service throughout the Home with Blossmore community to create a group of students who are promoting positive images of what young people can do and what they can do for the community. So the cash tag Cool To Be Kind group meets approximately once a month. We rotate through the schools. Our first meeting was at Parker, our next meeting was at Hart, and our next one should be at HF. During that time, this group of about thirty to forty students come together and talk about ways they can promote kindness, be kind to others at school, and convince others within the community to be kind. Of course, their product on the Martin Luther King Day of Service was to sort collective winter clothing items. We had so many people at one point packed into the warming house at Blossmore Park that people were in line outside to come in and donate clothes. At first, we were a little nervous when we saw the weather. We were afraid that people wouldn't come out. But people did come out. The students not just sorted through the clothes, but they included kind quotes into the individual bags of clothing that will be donated to these individuals. There were two HF teachers who found some schools with some students who were exhibiting a strong need for these winter clothing items. So not only will those items be delivered to those students in those schools in the local community, but it's also. local community, but there's also a kindness message within each bag of items. Students also distributed kindness pledges to people who pained to donate clothing, and a list of random acts of kindness that could be done throughout the community throughout the entire month of January and February. So we're currently working with our group to create a new service project for the spring. The group is growing, and it was a really great opportunity to kind of change the message that students and kids within our community can really do good, helpful things for other people. So that being said, we'll take a look at the discipline data for Parker for the year so far. These are the number of total referrals on a month-by-month basis. To most current data, the query is fifty-five discipline referrals as of this afternoon. So in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, only major infractions were tracked in the SWISS game. So if you compare these referrals to last year's referrals, it is double. But last year, minor infractions were not added into SWISS, whereas this year they are. So this year so far, we're looking at about eight hundred referrals we added in January since this fall.
Can you give an example of minor and major issues this year?
Sure. So a major issue would be something like a fight or a serious bullying incident, or a major outburst in class. Whereas a minor would be something like a student tosses a bottle into the trash in the lunchroom instead of placing it, or something like that. A minor thing that you would expect students to not have to be reminded of, as opposed to something that is large, just behavior.
And do we have a comparison categorically of major issues this year as opposed to last year, or in minor things?
Yes, something about thirty-eight percent of our disciplinary referrals this year are categorized as disruption in class or disrespect.
Okay, so, okay, so then that is the major, or?
Overall, referrals total, that is the largest category, is disrespect.
Okay.
Which, which there are then kind of two levels within SWISS, like major disrespect would be like something that, like profanity to a teacher, something like that. Whereas a minor disrespect might be like a student being called to another student. So there are levels of disrespect.
So, so, so looking at this, the data we collected, you know, we used to have, in some schools had three categories, some had two. Do we have two generally that we work with when we set up a referral? Major, minor, or like level one?
No, so every disciplinary referral looks alike. There is not a separate referral for a minor incident versus a major incident. The teacher writes a narrative along with what has been done before to address the behavior, and then there's a slot for whoever speaks to the student, whether it be the dean or a member of administration, of what their actions were or were taking. There's a few like choices, checkboxes, but then there's also a hundred section.
Okay, so, and I guess just comparatively speaking, like say in November, there's two hundred, let's say there's just two hundred. There's two hundred major and minor offenses, so therefore, if thirty-eight percent of those were minor, or just disrespect, then we would say that, so seventy-six, month of November, there were seventy-six incidences of people being disrespected. Do we have a way of, are we tracking that as compared to?
Yes, we can drill in SWISS, we can drill down like how many are for each category, which students are responsible for them. As far as overall data, we can also drill down group defense versus singular offenses for one student.
Okay.
So if you were to look at all of this data as excluding January, if you were to look at August and December, something like seventy-three point three percent of all of our disciplinary referrals are a singular referral. So a student has only ever received one referral, and it's their only one. So something like less than twenty-five percent are students who have two or more referrals. So you can also categorize it by number of referrals that a student has earned within the entire school year, as well as the categories.
Okay. So, so only, you said seventy-three percent are one-time only referrals. So, so twenty-five percent are the repeat offenders?
Yes.
I guess what I would, enough to, I guess what I'd be interested is, is to know, and I guess, certainly, you would probably be more interested in terms of coming up with a solution, is to compare, you know, what does, you know, a lower infraction this year look like as to last year? What are the cohorts? You know, is it just that, man, that sixth grade, you know, since kindergarten, that has been one feisty sixth grade class, or, you know? And, you know, what is our, our trend? Because the follow-up question is, okay, this is good to know, I'm glad we're getting this out there, what, what's our plan, you know, when we're doing about this? So, I guess, I'll take a look at the data.
Sure. So we are examining this data, and we are certainly seeing some trends. So here are some of the things that we're doing to address the concern. First and foremost, our restored practice of P circle training. We are really emphasizing this, especially with our sixth graders, because so many of them come from within our district schools where these practices are already in place. We want to continue that momentum. So our sixth grade teachers have been working as a team with Dr. David Trovitz and Mrs. Marty from Fostermore Hills and Serena Hills, working on consistent and ongoing professional development on how to implement P circles and restored practices into their classrooms. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the teachers on that. It is also reflected in the data. Our sixth grade counts for seventeen percent at last check of all of our disciplinary referrals, which is by far the much smaller number of the other two grades.
I'm sorry, did you have, which percentage, which grade did it present?
Sixth grade. So, sixth grade, so also the smallest amount of major and minor graders total. So our sixth grade has been working very hard on implementing preventative measures and P circles on a regular, ongoing basis. Every teacher in the sixth grade has implemented these programs.
So would you see as a cohort, this looks just at the start of a, of a trend where we have a much lower incidence?
Yes, yes, the goal is, of course, to build that culture as those students age up, as well as to get our sixth grade teachers really trained and really familiar with this process, so they can then engage in some professional development of working with our seventh and eighth grade teachers to continue that momentum, ask that really in this law.
Okay, and so, so the data that we have now suggests that what we've been doing in the grade schools has now moved to the junior high school, and we're expecting, or anticipating that we're going to see that those numbers go down universally once they get to seventh grade and then to years now. In eighth grade, we continue on that more positive culture trend.
Yes, and that's the hope, although it's certainly not going to be easy. There's a lot of work ahead of us. Some of the other things that we've done to address concerns is we increased our lunchroom supervision. There are more lunchroom supervisors in the lunchroom, and in the hallway, and at the washrooms during all three lunch periods every day. We also made an increase in our bus and parking lot supervision. Every teacher has a post outside in their particular bus or a particular door. Those are usually in weekly rotations, so sometimes teachers are inside of the building, and the following week they'll be outside at their bus post, and they swap with other teachers. So we wanted to make sure that everyone had eyes on where our students were exiting, getting onto the bus, making sure everybody is safe and supervised before and after school as well. That comes in with our active supervision training. We did provide a training to teachers on how to prevent negative behaviors by being an active supervisor, by being aware of where the spots are, that students may be out of view, or maybe around a corner from a camera, and how we can monitor those spaces a little bit more effectively, whether it's just by, you know, actively having a conversation with students as they fashion in the hall, and making sure that we're making eye contact with students, making sure we're supervising washrooms and water containers and areas like doors, entrances, and exits at the beginning and end of the day, where problems could arise, but well, not too bad. We also implemented student detention reflections. So if a student receives a detention, and they are after school, they are now filling out a reflection form. That reflection form asks students, why did I earn this detention? What actions could I do so that I won't earn this detention for the same behavior again? How did my actions impact others within the school community? And if necessary, who am I going to apologize to? And it kind of encourages that conversation with the teacher who may issue the detention, or the detention supervisor who is in that room. Those reflections are less stable to the detention, so then we have those in the students' files, so we can look back and have those conversations with students in our offices. So we noticed that you said on your reflection form in November, this about your behavior, and now you're here again with this, so what did you say you were going to do that you didn't do? It helps to focus our conversations with students, and it helps them to really think about what their behavior was. Of course, we also are implementing our PDIS reteaching groups, so going over the expectations and practicing those positive behaviors that we want on the bus, in the lunchroom, in the hallway, one time at the beginning of the school year is really not enough. So after each of our breaks, we're going to be revisiting those expectations and re-practicing them. So Mr. Hunter and myself visited every single PE class the day after we returned from Christmas break. We revisited those expectations for each of those important locations, like the school office, the bus, the lunchroom, with students. One of us took boys, one of us took the girls, we brought them together in the lunchroom, and they re-practiced those expectations and repeated them. So of course, we also, as we mentioned, moved to a more structured enrichment schedule. This is a time that was a little bit unstructured in previous years and in previous schedules. We've heard from the focus groups, from our staff members, teachers, that a planned activity that was predictable for every day of the week would help assist in disciplinary issues. We have seen some changes, but it is still a part of the day that we are looking at and looking for further structure. And then, of course, visible administration, with a focus on these positive relationships and positive behaviors. We attempt to be visible in the hallways, in the lunchroom, in the buses, in the parking lot, before and after school, at most, if not all, after-school events, concerts and activities. We've been really preaching out to be visible to the students, visible to the teachers, and as available as possible. Of course, we try to make rounds through the lunchrooms, through lunch periods every day. Unfortunately, we can't get into every lunch period every day. We definitely make an active effort to make sure we are visiting students where they are, whether it be the classroom, the hallway, or the lunchroom.
One thing I would mention before we transition, we continue to learn and grow as far as through the process. So at the beginning of the year, we had our PDIS opportunity as far as to track our expectations. We did whole break, the whole breakup, we brought them into the gym, we had a conversation, and we realized there's a better way to do it. And so, and reflecting on that process, again, when we came back, we had small groups, so we can have, to have a greater impact.
Before you, excuse me, before you transition to the next slide, I just want to piggyback for a few seconds off of, I think, where you were going with your line of questioning. I think one would be very helpful going forward, looking at the data, we don't have anything to compare to. So it looks like they are large numbers, but I don't really know. So I think it would be helpful, since you at least have the major infraction data from the previous school year, to at least be able to do a side-by-side comparison, because you've taken the time to create and start implementing all of these different activities to address the issues, but we need to see or have some idea going for what's working and what's not, and that's in how you reflect the data. So, you know, you may have a sense of whether or not the data you just showed us is high, but certainly those of us who have been on board for a while, we have a little bit to compare to, because we kind of know what the data was last year, but the newer board members have not had the opportunity to hit our discipline report. So more data is a good thing, and if you would like to walk away with a very clear picture of sort of where we are, are we getting better, are we about the same?
Well, we did run that data. So if we looked at total disciplinary referrals from last year, from just these months, the same months, it's approximately four seventy, so we're at about double. But last year's data didn't include minor infractions, so we would be guessing, because a lot of those minor infractions didn't make it into SWISS last year, so we don't know simply what those numbers would be.
Right, but you know the number of major infractions. Right, so whatever data you have, I think, so even if we're just looking at comparing major infractions from year to year, we can just have a sense of our, is it worse, is it going to be better?
I think if anyone can bring that back, one of the things we want to think about is will be the liability of that in our comparisons. So it will be useful to compare as far as last year, here's where we were, here's where we are now. I do have concerns about how that data was compiled, and what was included and what wasn't. So we can, we'll absolutely have to bring that comparison back. I would say that this year, obviously, we're more comprehensively capturing all the information. It's always worth going back to, what makes it and what doesn't make that cut. If we bring that comparison data back.
Yeah, no, I mean, I appreciate that, it's just that we have nothing to compare to, so we just look at how many infractions have occurred this year, and we just don't know whether that's high or not. Did you tell us what percentage, did you tell us what percentage of the seven forty was major?
I would have to check that number, but it's somewhere around thirty.
Okay, thirty percent?
Yeah.
And you said that thirty-eight percent is just, it's being fresh?
Well, labeled as disrespect, yes.
It's respectful, okay.
Yeah, and something like seventy-something percent of all referrals were a single-time referral.
Are there, give a number for how many kids get through an entire year and eight, I haven't done nothing related to this. They're perfectly angelic and...
We can certainly, we can certainly get those numbers at the end of the year. We could, we could look to see what those numbers are right now as to the end of January, but we'd have to start with that seventy-three percent that are zero or one, and then examine all of those to see which ones are at zero.
Because I really, you know, one of the things I always think about in the last couple of, well, really all the graduations I've ever attended at Parker, is seeing a sea of kids with special tassels, and, you know, they've had these, you know, they did these incredible service projects, and it wasn't even like a third of all the kids graduating have done something really incredible. And then thirty-five years ago, I was not one of those kids. And, you know, it's, it's great to see it from the other side, and that's something to be really proud of. And so, I think one of the, I think these numbers are very important, and it's very important to be accurate, and not be shy about reporting exactly what's there, so you can view the issue and take care of it. But at the same time, I would, I guess I would like to know, you know, did every kid do point seven, you know, five infractions, you know, how does this, how does this, is there ninety, seventy kids, sixty kids, fifty kids where we start to see there's incidences from that, you know, unfortunately, sometimes hope eclipses the incredible, incredible things. And just even when you look at the reading and the unbelievable, you know, announcement thing you were seeing coming out of Heather, Heather Hill, I mean, that's, those kids go out and do amazing things. You know, the whole Trojan family has left a wake of, you know, people smiling and good about themselves, and, you know, because they're great kids, and lots of our other kids in this district too. And I, so I guess I, and part of me might ask you about, you know, the context is, you know, the part of the narrative of this community is, this is a great place, this is a great place to raise a kid. And it's important to address the discipline issue, but I don't want to lose our thing we're most proud of with our, our children. And it's important to address the discipline issue, but I don't want to lose our thing we're most proud of with our children.
I agree. And one of the things comes down to teaching expectations. So when a student receives a referral, what's being done with that referral? What's being done with that student? Is it just a consequence, or are we understanding why the student created that infraction and did that thing? And are we teaching them the right way to do it next time so that's not repeated? So as far as like a case study, we have an incident that involved about twelve kids. They attended a restorative session on a Saturday. Of those twelve kids, only two students have received their referrals since. That was for a totally unrelated, different behavior, not what was addressed in their restorative session. So that's the kind of proactive work that we're looking for. Students make mistakes, they break rules, sometimes they need to, sometimes they don't. But are we teaching them how to reflect on that behavior so that those things don't occur again? And the student's not repeating that behavior. So we're really trying to emphasize teaching the appropriate behaviors and using those teachable moments when a student does earn a referral, on how to kind of reframe that behavior so the student learns about it. All right. So I'm going to share a little bit about our map and our meeting and where we're at, and how we're hoping to make some progress. So first, we have a snapshot of MAF, and one of the things that we decided to do was take a look at the entire building. Because we felt that what the most important thing was to narrow down the specific strands in the areas that we were having concerns with, and not, at this point, breaking it apart to grade levels. So we took a look at it, and what we found, surprisingly enough, is that all of our strands are relatively equal when we compare all of the grade levels. And then even when you look at six, seven, and eighth grade, you'll see that the data correlates very well. There's not a lot of statistical difference between which is our lowest area and which is our highest area. And so that's kind of how the strands break down. So then that led us to our action plan. Because when we take all things into consideration, we have a lot of graded areas in need, but we also have a lot of areas to celebrate. So one of the things is that with the science teachers, they're partnering and taking a look and saying that they analyze and interpret data all of the time. So why not be more purposeful with it and make sure that we're using the same terminology? We need standardizing TUPA, and we're building from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade, so we're not continually revisiting the same things. So we're growing on those ideas, and we're also supporting the MAF curriculum while doing that. The other piece is we are doing an after-school math and enrichment tutoring program, and this will actually start tomorrow. And so the students that we've targeted initially are those students who are at Vanty or Orchestra, because that enrichment time during the day is our time where we meet those intervention needs. Those students have other obligations during that time. So we have decided to invite them to an after-school tutoring program, and it will begin on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and they'll get targeted instruction around their areas of need. Then for our enrichment students, to help them grow a bit more, we've also invited them. So those are our students in our very top tier, who, mentioning them, we're not seeing as much growth as we would like. So we're going to invite them on Tuesdays and Thursdays as well. Another piece is we have hired an additional MAF care professional. The need became clear when we started to see that there were very specific needs for some of our very needy students. And it didn't make sense to have students who were struggling with numerical sense, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, in the same class with students who were having struggles with fractions. Because how can we meet the needs of those very different learning needs in the same way? And that helped, we did see some growth, we have had students exit out of those. And depending on the grade level, we've seen most growth in eighth grade. We've seen the use in sixth grade so far, but they've also not had targeted interventions in this way but for the last few months. The other piece is we have a data analysis and action plan, and so we provided training to teachers. So we took a look at the school-wide data that we showed you in the previous slide, and we asked teachers to look at it and talk about the things that they noticed and the things that were there to celebrate, and those areas that they would like to focus on. And then our next step is taking that data down to the grade levels. And what we like to do with the grade levels and what we're planning to move forward is having the grade levels look at their individual grade level data and having conversations about how we can support those areas of need. And then we will use the winter MAF data to help us, because now we have two pictures of where our sixth graders, our seventh graders, and eighth graders are, where they came to accept, and now actors of instruction here at Parker, where they act. The other piece is that we have started a book study that's called The Growth Mindset. And the idea of the kind of book study is to allow our teachers to take a look at a fixed mindset, saying, "I can't do that, I'll never be able to do that," and seeing how growth mindset, if I try hard enough, if I put the time into studying, we will see the change in students. Because a lot of times, when you believe you can do it, you can't. And our other piece there is the student goal setting. This ties in with the growth mindset. So we're asking students to be very thoughtful, and when they look at their own scores, many times, these teachers help students with the need to know. And when a student sets their goals for themselves or takes a look at it, it's far more meaningful. And so in all of their classes, or in their enrichment classes, they're taking a look at where they started in the fall, taking a look at where they're at in the winter, and they're being very conscious of, how did I get there? Did I spend more time after school reading? Am I being a little bit more conscious of doing my homework? Am I using the homework help after school? And so we're asking them to reflect on those pieces, to really inform themselves about how they met where they were in the fall, to where they got into in the winter, where they'll go in the spring. And the final piece is we just got approval to hire another MAF physician. And this MAF physician will be going into some of our math classes that need additional support. It will be a certified staff member to help make those books in those classes. Our next one is reading. And again, we broke down reading very similarly to what we broke down MAF. Again, we looked at the entire building. What we did notice is that our reading data is about thirteen points higher than many of our areas in MAF. And that's, so that's a big area to celebrate. But again, we saw that there was not really a statistical difference between our areas of need and our areas that we were behind achieving, which tells us that we're doing a lot of great things, but we still need to focus on some other things, which is our MAF. So one of the actions to help meet those needs is achieve three thousand. What we've heard from teachers is that they like it. It was difficult for them at first to get the hang of it, but now that they're using it, they really like it. They like that we can do it level text, but the content is the same. So it doesn't matter if I'm in a class where I have students at the forty percent out of the ninety. We're all reading the same stuff, it just might be in a different format, it's going to be at my level. And so many of the teachers have really said it's a great thing because they don't feel like they're, students who are struggling are still bad. They're not missing out on that experience, which is really good. The other piece again is the structured enrichment time. So this was a big need of teachers, and it was a need of parents and students in all our focus groups. And so in our enrichment time, we put in two days a week where students are getting exposure to actual reading. And so Fridays is their independent reading, because what many of the teachers who were recording was that students were doing a lot of their school reading, but they weren't reading for enjoyment. So we weren't instilling that love of reading, that love of literature. And, you know, it shows that if a student is reading for pleasure, then they're going to grow, but they have to be reading outside of school and they shouldn't be. Again, we did our book study, Mindsets in the Classroom, and it really does focus on helping students set those goals and believe they can. The data analysis and action plans are going to be identical to how good they were with math, but we're going to be using our reading data. And again, the idea is to find those common languages and common themes that we can do in all of the subject areas. The other piece is the co-teaching professional development. We have a lot more opportunities this year at Parker for co-teaching. And we found that one of our struggles was that co-teaching can create that you have to really be conscious of that you're a co-teacher and you're working together to support your students. And so we found that our teachers needed that training to be able to rely on one another to make classroom learning smoother. So that was considered by our instructional coaches. And many of our teachers have reported that it has been very helpful in opening our eyes, but having it effectively. There is still room to grow, and it's still an ongoing process, but it is starting those conversations. Again, we're doing the goal-setting and reflection. So students set their goals for math, but they also set their goals for English. And then finally, all ELA and social studies teachers are supporting the informational text with a common annotation system. And this annotation system has actually come down from the high school, and it's being incorporated across the board.
Before you transition?
I have a couple. So you mentioned the reading, we're agreeing for enjoyment. Are we carving out time of the day where kids are reading a non-assignment book? Or is it that we're encouraging them to read new books to be at the school?
So it's been both, and we realize that we need more time to do it. Right now, this year, we've incorporated the reading logs across the grade levels. And we also have a Friday year time. We are aware that we need more time. How to build that in today is something that we're looking at. And we have had suggestions from staff in order to continue exploring that because we do see the need for it.
Okay, and my other, two other questions. One was that with the, you mentioned mindset, I assume that's a book by Carol Platt that you're writing your math. Is everyone reading the same book as you mentioned, mindset?
It's the mindset in the classroom one, so Yellow Book by Rechee.
Okay.
And that one we chose because it has a little bit more practical application. And what I need to get is there is some handouts, and it's more of a recipe on how to build it within your teachers and within your students. Where the other one's a bit more philosophical.
Sure. So I guess my question is, are all the teachers reading one book?
Yes.
Okay, so they're all reading mindset in the class? Whoop, and that's across, I can't see the address.
Yes.
So not only are we doing it at the primary school, but each grade up contains resuming the challenge?
That's great, that's a good answer. And my last comment or question, in terms of the annotation system, which I think is fantastic that you're doing that, and you are doing in conjunction with what's going on in HF, so that it would be, it's not a case of, okay, eighth grade, that guy's one is completely different next year. It's something that they will continue moving on through grade level.
Nice. I have a couple of questions. Can you go back to one of the, you have the MAF reading slide?
The data or?
The data, please, yes. I mean, so, and thank you, I mean, I appreciate you highlighting the actions and activities that we needed and implemented to address. But the book, the reading and the MAF slide, I need you to dissect it a little bit more for me because what I'm not able to connect is what actions are you actually addressing? Because if I look at this, it looks like numbers of students in average or above average range, that's actually, that's not bad, right? But we've also seen data that shows all types of bells and whistles and fire alarms going off, and that's not what I see in this slide in particular. So it could be the wording that's used, or it's not broken down by grade level. So it's hard for me to see what you're actually addressing because I look at the slide and I don't see a lot of systems going on on this particular slide.
And so...
May I come in there as well, Michelle?
Oh, sure, go ahead. I'm sorry, we forgot you were there, I didn't see everything.
I know. I'll do a little more play, this slide is terrible. It tells us absolutely nothing. If I had a normal distribution of students, about, you know, half of them can be above average, but half of them are too big to below average. And this slide doesn't tell me anything different than that. And then you added an attribute to this slide, the statistical probability was our greatest area of need. We've all seen the data that shows our sixth graders are accomplishing essentially no growth in math over the course of the year. And certainly, you're not trying to tell me that all they need to do is study statistics. But you already said the presentation, that there's a difference in the various strands. That's not our problem. So you're showing us a part, a data presentation that doesn't show us what our problems are. This is not pitched strongly, because I think, I know that you guys know the data better, so this better work on, because this slide is green, we are afraid to confront the issues. You can make a slide like this for any evil district, and it would make any code figure look okay.
Can I just clarify a quick question? When you say above average, are you referring to our school or in a group norm average nationally originally?
So we're taking a look at their, the grade scores.
Okay.
And so one of the pieces, and the reason we put this slide in, is because we think that the conversation needs to be too bold. Is we need to talk about where our students are achieving, and who's average and above average, but then we also need to have that conversation about growth. Currently, we're looking at our fall data, because the students got no instruction. So to look at growth from last year's data for students that have not gone on from high school, we felt that it would misinform some things. So we wanted to take a look at where our students are. And then once we look at this data, and then we have our winter data, we'll be able to see how students learn.
I think that's the initial part of the conversation we can. One of the things that we'll pick up later is the conversation about the data warehouse. I think the heavy lifting there will be to determine what's most important to us. This is the, this is the date, whether we like it or not, how it's combined. You can absolutely break it apart and do several things to slice it up. But we have to decide as a board district, which are the important pieces that we want to measure. And then once we determine that, we have to rely on the administrators and the plans to move forward. We've all agreed that growth in math specifically, and certainly ELA, is really important. In particular, that the students who need around that low end and low average side of the scale, but really are middle sixty percent of kids, and then the kids at the top of the range, they have not grown at rates that we want to see. So I firmly believe that the understanding of the importance is there. The work here is to decide how do we want to analyze the data moving forward. And so we can't have the honest conversations about what's working and what isn't, and then make those adjustments.
So I understand we don't have the, all the data tools in place for the MAF. But the two things I would like to focus on, that I really want to see out of a presentation like this is, that the administration clearly understands what the problems are, and has a list of potential solutions for those problems. These slides tell me that, I mean, if I didn't know you guys better, and I just walked in out of the room, I would conclude that you guys had no idea what the problems are. Because statistics and probability is not a problem. And then when we go on to the list of actions, passes, the things that any school should be doing on a daily basis. So just, you know, science teachers are supporting the greatest area of need, that's not, it's a problem, that's a minor event. We've got, based on winter math data, teachers will create action plans. I assume that all of our teachers are, should be doing that every year, shouldn't be doing it the last five or ten years. If you're telling me that they're not doing it, well, then, okay, then I guess we identified part of the problem. But that is basic, right, education, what I want, they should already be doing. And then getting goal-setting and reflection, I don't know why that's on this list, unless you're telling me that they're not already doing it. This is basic stuff. You can take these goal points and return them to any presentation. This is to communicate that the administration, that you're understanding of what the potential problems are, what you're going to do, so. I like it, so I'd like to hear more about what the teacher reading in MAF, okay? That is a change in what should be happening on a daily basis. But this, you know, saying that we're going to look at our test scores and create an action plan, I mean, that's like saying I want to get up and eat breakfast in the morning. You guys aren't doing that, I shouldn't be hearing about that.
I think the challenge, Ken, is if those things aren't happening, they are a role. And as much as, again, if we really want to have those honest conversations about what's currently happening, what needs to happen in the future, what's happened in the past, then activities that may seem mundane or... That we would consistently expect, if we're not saying no, then they become a role. We have to establish those levels of expectations and those commitments, those best practices that will deliver the changes that proceed. I'm with you. There's other challenges. We're not making widgets. So we can't just increase production in order to increase test scores. There's a number of factors that we have to address, and I think, what I see in the actions is a step towards creating practices, consistent practices throughout the grade levels and the departments to deliver the future growth. There's always more to do. I'm absolutely on the same page as you on that. But as we try to move forward and specialize the services that we provide, whether it's at the upper end of the spectrum or the bottom, we have to first ensure that our tier one level of instruction that all students receive is of, is of the highest quality as possible.
So you're telling us that teachers are not looking at the kids' test scores and making adjustments based on the best ones?
I'm telling you that we would need to increase our sophistication to pull better data, to pull data more frequently, to pull data that's comparable across departments, potentially across schools or our partners, if we want to continue to collaborate with James Harker, et cetera. And I would say we're at different levels of implementation, K D.
Well, what about, I think, the simple classroom individual student problem, right? Every math test cycle, the teacher gets a report to tell us exactly where the student is. They still need to get fancy graphs on what qualities students fall into. They have all this information available with them. Are you using that information or not?
Inconsistently. And part of the reason is, it's not the lack of want. The teachers work very hard and, you know, they're pulling data. We can remove a hurdle of inconsistent assessments. We can help the teachers with better assessments that more accurately assess where the children are. We can put the structure and the software in place to decrease the time of our PLCs, for example. So we have teachers that want to analyze data, but they're spending so much time compiling that it gets in the way of the actual conversation about the practices that they're going to change and adjust. I think, again, there are things that we can do on our end to put teachers in a better position, but also clearly identify those expectations and move forward with those. One of the reasons that we decided not to replace the dean at Parker, instead to add an assistant principal because of the added value of adding an additional instructional leader. And I'm seeing the benefits of that, but part of that is to make sure now we have three administrators who can spread out throughout the building and guide those conversations, and really lean into those, the tough work of data analysis, curriculum planning, and then ultimately, learning opportunities for kids.
What is the administration's opinion as to why sixth grade students do not show growth in math?
I don't know that, I don't know that that's a fair question. You can put it to them, but again, at this point, I don't know that it's appropriate. I don't know that I would expect them to have an appropriate answer. I think, you know, if you have any initial thoughts, please.
I would say, in terms of what happened in the past, I mean, you know, we can say as far as moving forward with the plan which we have, we'll have a better idea. And so we're looking at the implementation of the report. We're looking at, so what information was covered between now and the winter math data. And so hopefully, the goal is to see some growth. If not, we're backtracking, looking at information. And then moving forward, how do we fill in those gaps based upon the information that was already covered? I think there's, you have, you have a curriculum. And so there's a difference between the curriculum being taught and the curriculum being covered. And so we don't want to just cover material just to get approval. We want to make sure that we're teaching the curriculum. We want to make sure that students are learning and they're retained. And that's one of the things that I like about the new curriculum. In your assessments, they continue to cycle. So even as you move on to a different subject, you still want to be tested on subjects that you covered before. Again, deepening that understanding and that influence and stay fresh. And so, again, we're looking, once we get the winter data, we can see what's working and what's not working and plan to address it.
So one of the reasons, Cam, would be inaccurately placing students. Students being placed in classrooms above their level, that not only above the level, but out of the reach of their level. And the feedback that we're receiving all the way from the high school level is that decisions that have been made in our district and in 153 as well, around the area of acceleration, have created students with major gaps in their learning, particularly in the area of math. And what that creates, to Fred's point, when you think about covering the curriculum versus the students learning the curriculum, the amount of backfilling that has to be done prevents the exposure, coverage, and learning of the content in some of those classes. So that's one of the areas that we have to address, booking to the 18, 19 school years specifically.
So I think.
So can we, there's, there's no, to this my point, right? Those are no problems. But none of the actions on our list address that problem or tackle. And, you know, if we haven't done the winter testing and we don't really know where we are at growth for this year, is it that we haven't done the winter math testing yet, or is it coming up with where we are?
Right, we're, we're in the window right now.
Okay, so in a week or so, we'll have some idea of whether the new math curriculum has had an impact so far, or whether, or the extent to which we still have issues, for example, in the grade, right?
It will give us a picture of where we currently stand. I mean, I'm not ready to, I'm not sure if I'm ready to make the most pronounced, but that, that's something that will tell us where our students currently are based on the classes that they're in. Again, we have acceleration issues that I am very concerned about, that we need to adjust. So, yeah, so it'll tell us where we currently are with our students based on the current course catalog. One of the things that is not up here is the work that's being done with Annabelle Crawford and the administrators, not only across to Homewood, but also vertically up to HF to revamp the course catalog format. There were some emails floating around between the administrators today, pulling different models, and looking at different ways to align the work that they're doing. So there's more, I would say, there's more work that's being done that's on this list. Some of it for this year, some for future.
All right, so if I understand you correctly, the adjustments to acceleration will be something that, that may be between two years.
Correct.
Rather than just for.
Correct.
Well, wait.
So.
So in the moment, I can, can I clarify that, that we are using the current data that we get for continuous improvement of instruction? So that it's not a case of, well, didn't do great, you know, this year, we'll plan for next year. It's a matter of, as far as I understand, you know, the model is that they're continuously improving instruction through data that we get, either through classroom or, or school-wide or grade-wide assessments. And certainly from, from our math data, which comes with a lot of resources from teachers to address specific areas within, within math scores. My experience that, you know, with reading is that there is no score you get that's not come with a long list of things that really need to be paid attention to.
Sure. No, we are supposed to argue. And I would say, what will happen next year is, I have a very clear process for placing students in classrooms.
Okay.
It certainly leaves room for a grade area, because we want to make sure that there's a little bit of flexibility in there. But if you place a student in algebra classroom that doesn't have a firm grasp on pre-logical skills, we're setting that child up for future failure. And their growth will not be appropriate, and neither will their achievement. And that's part of the combination of challenges that we've had in the past based on, if I'm understanding correctly, as long as it was requested to move up into a different class, it was granted. And that creates challenges that we have at the classroom level for the teachers. Trying to differentiate is challenging enough, and frankly, anything more than 2 or 3 levels just frankly isn't effective. It's just not. So as we introduce the amount of variance into some of the classrooms that we have, we decrease the teachers' general ability to differentiate effectively. Overall, students' ability to have learning experiences appropriately in their background, and build on their previous knowledge to help them accelerate. So we'll keep using data at the classroom level, but as far as making major changes to the acceleration process, that would be 2018, 19. Project.
What specific problems are the math, after school math figuring, additional math for professional, and additional math teacher, how it can be utilized, and what problems do they intend to solve?
So are additional math or professional? One of the things that we're finding is that when we had our tier three math in our mentions, we were putting every student who qualified for tier three regardless of strand in the same room. And that became difficult because you're having students who are two or three levels. They're all tier three, but their levels of tier three and their levels of need were so varied that we weren't seeing any growth, because if a student can't add or subtract, getting them to do fractions is impossible at that level. So we had to pull back and say, those students who need that very varied, specific instruction on addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, they need to be in a separate group. And so what we were able to do with the new math for professional was we were able to take a look and say, are there seventh and eighth graders who have similar needs that we can group together? Because previously, they had always been grouped by seventh or eighth or sixth. And so by putting students of similar needs together, we were actually being able to target those specific needs and seeing more growth within those areas. In eighth grade alone, they exited eight students through the first two rounds of math intervention. Sixth grade, we, because the way the sixth grade schedule is there, enrichment time is slightly different. So we did have a struggle finding another person, but now that we have, we're able to split those into smaller groups. So now we have a group of students working on fractions, and a group of students working on addition and subtraction.
Okay. Do you have additional questions or comments, Cameron?
No, I have none.
Okay.
I do. So one of the things that, that is often looked at in schools is time, and the issue of time on tests. So I look at the number of discipline issues, and I wonder how much this is impacting opportunities for engagement. And I think back to the C P M Bridges meeting that Annabelle had. And as I talked informally with teachers, one of the things that seemed to come up as a concern was some of the challenges of delivering the curriculum and really offering students time to think mathematically. And so as, the number of discipline infractions seems really high to me. And so I just wonder what your thoughts are in terms of how that's impacting actual instruction time and how disruptive these infractions are. I, we don't have the data to show whether it's in or out of the classroom, you can bring that. But I just wonder in general, if that's something, I mean, I don't, not me on the spot, but something for you to think about when, when you come back with more data, what, what is the impact of, of that? That's one. And then the other thing is, you talked about celebrating your successes. So then I would love to see you identify what are, to be able to answer the question, why do you have success since in average and above average? What, what is it that you've done right, or that was in place even prior to running that? So that you're able to maintain that. So if it's something that's working, you don't want to change it and searching for a solution for certain populations, do you see what I'm saying? So to think about that too.
That was a piece that we did add to the action plan. So another one, missing out some questions, is how is our action plan a little bit different? Well, we're asking teachers to look at the things that they did well, that are helping and contributing to our students' success. And then what are those areas specifically within a classroom or within a grade level that are not? And so why that's different is because we never purposely looked at it. We looked at it in a bathroom with my class and my students. We've never looked at it globally at the grade level and then said, how can social studies support math? How can science support reading? And so that's the next step that we're at, is that instead of just saying math is math and reading is reading, we want to have all of those subjects supporting each other, because we're all doing those things. But we need to acknowledge that we're speaking a common language. And if not, we're still talking about the same things, but let's align our language so that it's common across some of the other areas. So that when I am teaching something in science, or I am teaching something in ELA, that I can support math in that.
Based on what you saw, do you feel like, what you see on a daily basis, do you feel like teachers were honest about their shortcomings, are comfortable in sharing those issues so that you can really be able to address them? Or do you think that's kind of a work in progress as you work at mindset and math? Because you mentioned that you asked them to target, essentially, good opportunities for improvement. Like, why am I not getting right? So I wonder, does that match what you're seeing in terms of the needs of your faculty?
What I would say, we did the whole school. And so I would say, we had honest conversations about, I think, that conversation will be the rest of the winter math and math grade level conversation we talked about in the teacher's life.
And I think that connects to your earlier point about discipline instructions. More than 60% of all referrals do come from the classroom setting. So I think the next highest amount is like 20% from the lunchroom. So it is a considerable number. So I think that when we talk about those action plans, some of those discussions are going to have to include some of those elements. About as far as implementing the curriculum, and implementing procedures, and implementing those PC rules, you know, how would we create a positive classroom environment where students are really maximizing their time in text and maximizing their time learning?
Do you actually, I have another question to prompt that, oh, this is a weird one, but I'll talk into it in a second. First one, you mentioned that you're moving math beyond just math for social studies. You're essentially a math teacher too. There's lots of math in social studies. Do you have a specific timeline or a step process by which you'd say, okay, this year, we're just going to, you know, push out this idea that students need to persevere through a problem, which coincides with, you know, the key math behavior? You know, is there, you know, like, I keep thinking of, you know, HF that really went to a, they use Gretchen Corby model for reading across the content area. They spent four years by which they slowly stepped it in. Do we have, are we looking at, or are we moving toward creating a timeline by which we would say, okay, you know, we would like all teachers in content areas to address, you know, these behaviors that are common in math also would be important in other areas?
I would say we don't have a timeline. I would say we were obligated with factors on our data and our evaluation.
Okay. Okay. And my other question in terms of behavior. I know that we have reading coaches as well as math, but are we also thinking of behavior coach coaches as well to, to create consistency with addressing disrespect in classrooms? Or to help, to create a consistency in reporting that?
What Dr.?
So I think, I mean, I think I heard you say this a few minutes ago, Dr. spent about as a board, as a district, figuring out what data we want to look at and what's important. So we definitely need to have consistency in terms of how data is presented, how we, and how buildings present it to us and talk to us. Because if I look at this slide, it does not look like, I, I don't, again, hear the bells and whistles and alarms going off that I typically do when I have seen the data over the past several years. So what I don't want to walk away from this presentation thinking is that we are in a fairly good place. And we're implementing some things to make some tweaks here and there. There are alarms going.
There are alarms going off at Parker. So I, you know, and I know that you are all working on it and I absolutely respect you and you've been building for a year, so you're still assessing a lot of this stuff. But we have historically shied away from having very tough conversations. And this is the only opportunity we get to interface with you guys. And so we can't support if we don't know what the issues are. And, you know, so it's fantastic that you have been proactive and you're creating programs and activities and things to address some of the issues, but we don't know what the issues are that you're actually addressing. You, I think, for example, the AAA is a great one, which would be great to have had that on the slide, to have an idea of this is, these are our challenges. We love hearing the great stories, but we really have been missing for years. Like tell me your real challenges so we know how to support you. We need to know what you are up against. We have heard, we, you know, unlike the discipline data, we have a whole lot of data on academics, right? So we know the grade levels that are struggling and even though you've been in the building less than a year, you probably have a good idea of what your challenges are. And you have teachers that have been there for years who also can speak from this. So I guess my message is, the next time we have the opportunity to have a conversation about Parker, you know, please don't shy away from having hard conversations with us. You don't need to always walk away feeling good. It's okay. Maybe we can end with a field report next time. If you can. And I can't stress this enough, it is past the time for us to have very hard, tough conversations about how would we move Parker forward so that the next time we are having this conversation, we see improvement, even if it's marginal. Then it's marginal, it is what it is and we get that, but we need to have a very true, honest conversation and ask where we are and how we can support you as a board and as a district and as a community so that we can see Parker move in the direction that we need it to move in.
Well, we have the leadership, as far as the board, I think, we have percentages and numbers and, you know, 300 something, I mean, that's, that's a need, that's, that speaks to me as, as an even again, this has no reflection on anything we've done, this is our baseline. And so the goal is to see improvement here. And as I said, the numbers in terms of this, those are high numbers. And so we have worked and we're committed to doing it. And so again, we appreciate the board's mountain and support.
So will you finish? I think there are a couple of slides left.
So we've kind of talked about this information here. It was pointed out earlier, just in terms of the tri-district integration. So either the principals, myself, as far as the change target, in HF, we have, we get together and discuss issues and planning together. And so that's been a valuable resource for me, learning community, and also that really challenges, and so we collaborate together. Again, some of these things in which we've mentioned already, so we will, this one. And so again, opportunities for us as far as to improve, you know, again, we talked about the math action plan. So we have the book, we're learning from the book. And so moving forward, we want to implement strategies so that our sales and staff members, we grow our growth mindset, but also begin to impart that as far as to our students. We're very excited about our building leadership team, which has come into play as far as to do the line of the heavy lifting, as far as to be able to move our building forward. We have a great team of teachers, and so everyone's open to their speed as far as to address the issue. Looking at, again, as far as our discipline data, and so using that information to inform as far as our SEL lessons. And we're having conversations in terms of, is this the route we're seeking to go? We're seeing a lot of impact movement in terms of towards justice. And so do we move quicker to our seventh and eighth grade to have a greater impact and be part of that conversation? Again, looking at our data, understanding changes within the community, things supporting moving forward, and have those open and honest conversations about race, culture, and even looking at implementation of culture of teachers. Again, having conversations as far as with the high school, but also what we know is as far as with our students.
Are there any more questions or comments?
So when this data comes back, how would you like to see? This was an honest conversation. If you want to see the data in a different format, initial box, written down by grade level, et cetera, all the way to the part data, you'd like to see that.
It might be helpful if, I guess, board members sent in a descriptor of what specifically they would like to see or expect to see. And, you know, certainly you guys have, and I got sort of questions, I want to say, I know that you guys work very hard and I hear nothing but great things about the team. You know, you guys have done a fantastic job. I think that, you know, you always expect to see things where you have an expectation of outlaying. I said it's a tendency to disconnect, but I think it would help if group members maybe would contact us and say, you know, things that you're interested in.
Because at the end of the day, what comes down to is the same thing we have conversations about my goals, right? Making those measurable. When we decide they're measurable, that becomes important and urgent. And it's the commitment then that all of those other things that aren't go away. So we have to be very careful and very purposeful as we set these targets because they will determine where we spend our time and the time. The semi-goal there is we have to also be fine with not doing other things and understanding that there is a set of human bandwidth that we have to function in, especially in an industry that is 80% people. So we absolutely should have these conversations. If you have ways you want to send the data, send those to me as part of our conversation later. And we'll start building those dashboards. Ultimately, we won't have to worry about the presentation, there won't be any secrets or any surprises because the data is the data. We'll see it, we determine monthly, quarterly, or trimester, however we want to do that. It'll be the same every time, it's going to cancel from the show's point. You'll know what you're looking at and you'll know what to expect when you bring the information to you. But certainly don't want the team to walk away without carrying my full-throated support in the work that's happening. It's a difficult job. Middle schoolers are challenging. We've talked about the challenges in the building. We have everything from acceleration to the schedule. And we're changing our middle school schedule, but some of the challenges that we had in place is going to be a Herculean task, but at the end of the day, if that's what's most important, then we have to commit to doing that. The team working with the teachers and the parents, in my experience, have been very positive. So just thanks all of you for presenting and for the work.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Now to summer 2018 life-saving projects.
Good evening. I am Andrew Call and CEA project manager, grade associates serving in the school district on this project. I also want to thank the Board of Education and the administration, the opportunity for you to have to serve your school district. I look forward to completing this project for the district as well. On January 10th, we opened the bids for the 2018 life-saving implementation project at Heather Hill and Parker Jr. High School. There were 10, sorry, seven bidders submitted on the project. The base bid scope of the work was shared with Board of Education back in July. But at Heather Hill, there's repairing the storefront windows, repairing the fascia panels, replacing some cantilevers throughout the building. And then at Parker Jr. High School, was replacing the roof system remaining there. There was some actual garbage started last summer and addressing the mezzanine guardrail gymnasium. Included within the bid documents, there were 11 alternates. At Heather Hill, there are five alternates. Each alternate stands alone to be added, one or the other, or all inclusive. We are recommending to accept all five alternates. At Heather Hill, number one was for additional cabinetry, four rooms. Two was for wardrobes and six rooms. Five was to bring four of the classrooms that currently are heat-only up to air conditioning. Alternate number five was to bring air conditioning into five remaining classrooms within Heather Hill that do not have air conditioning. And then alternate five, oh, I got my numbers right there, I'm sorry. Alternate five was to add air conditioning so it would be multi-purpose. At Parker, alternates six, seven, and eight are pick and choose. It's one or the other. It's not all three, it's not two, it's just one or the other. Base bid, we're just going to be planning to reinstall the existing mechanical systems that come off the roof that serve the interior classrooms. Alternate number six is to replace the mechanical systems to those 13 classrooms with similar equipment. Alternate number seven would be to upgrade those 13 classrooms to what's called a water chilled system, you know, enlarging cantilevered place on the roof, providing chilled water pumping around to those 13 classrooms. And then alternate number eight would be enlarging that chiller system and providing air conditioning to not only the water chilled air conditioning to those 13 classrooms, but also adding air conditioning to the 11 remaining classrooms within the school that do not have air conditioning. And we are recommending to accept alternate number eight. Alternate number nine was to address the handrails around the mezzanine stairs of corridor. Alternate number 10 was, we asked the contractor that if the school district offered to weigh the liquidated damage, particularly in product, that the school district could use it. We do not recommend alternate number 10, and actually, the majority of the contractors submitted would be no say in the school district. And then alternate number 11 is to add air conditioning to the south gymnasium, which we are also recommending to accept. Three hours to bidders. The apparent vote bidder happens to be Keith Construction. They may be familiar, they're working within the school district currently from this past summer's project. The next apparent vote bidder is $300,000 higher, above 3.3 million and change that the contract Keith Construction would offer. So there's a pretty substantial difference between the two bidders. Both bidders have an existing relationship with the senior school district. So we know how Keith Construction is performing year school district from this past summer's project. Prior grade associates joined year school district. Chicago Heights Construction, which is the number two bidder, also had some difficulty in closing out the project. I believe at Parker Jr. High School, we have part-time teachers expanded, there's additional work done within the scope of that work.
I'm sorry, did you say there was a $300,000 difference between the lowest and then between he and Chicago Heights?
Yes. Keith Construction's bid is $3,312,200 and 206 dollars. The next low bidder, which is Chicago Lights, is $3,620,200. $200.
And what's the one, what?
The third bidder?
Yeah, I was just trying to see the difference between.
Third one. Very third question. And this number, the numbers I'm quoting is accepting fascia, alternates one through five, eight, nine, to 11. The next apparent vote bidder would be Heather Brothers, they came in at $3,656,700. So the difference from number two, number three is right at $36,500, if I have my head correctly.
So it's about 1% difference-ish?
There's, yes, if we number, the difference between one and two is about a 10-plus percent difference. From two to three would be a 1% difference. Yes. We fully respect that, it's a pretty substantial amount of money. The school district certainly do not have unlimited budgets to be spending on their facilities. But we certainly want to make sure that you get a quality project done with a budget and on time. So what we are proposing, what we were proposing is that, if Keith Construction was awarded the project, that's similar to when the addition was built on Parker Jr. High School back in, sorry, Jordan, when was that?
2014.
Full-time site superintendent we brought on to the project to help expedite the project through, make sure that it is done on time and within budget. As far as this is a school, we cannot afford to have this project not be finished on time. It has to be finished on time, it has to hold on time. We have to have it this summer.
So are you recommending?
$300,000 is a lot of money.
Okay, so let me ask a question. If it were the exact same, would you, what would be the recommendation?
If the price between number one and number two were the same?
One, two, and three.
I certainly would rather have number one.
Okay. So, okay, so all things being equal, you would have recommended either two or three? We were more likely to. Okay, never mind, I get it.
Not like that Keith Construction and Chicago Heights has very similar product record within your school district, they are both, they're difficult to stand behind and say, yes.
Okay.
My interpretation?
Can you remind us of what the issues were with Keith this summer? Can you remind us if this is best for your, you know, Chicago Heights?
How much were within your school district? I believe at around 2,000.
Stop.
Eight. When this, when the Parker renovation project was done. So it certainly has been, that shows the county and your first Chicago Heights construction.
Do we have a more, more current data or feedback or whether just local performance has been like or even?
I certainly did reach out to other architects that have worked with Chicago Heights recently. And although their references did not, I would say, come back as negative, they certainly came back as average for a contractor that works within the school districts, fulfills expectations, some hopes that I have are a great being, good product. These architects have worked with them for many years, typically met expectations, projects were typically done on time. The C and C put those on, to make sure that they stay on track in time budget.
And then with Keith this summer, that was, but that primarily is your availability of the case work.
The project this summer was primarily doors and hardware. So the contractor was having difficulty getting, getting and coordinating all of the bits and parts to complete the hardware installation.
Did you receive the email? So, or members, we have now checked the email. We did receive an email from the Illinois Foundation for your contract. Is there a perspective on, is that like a better disbill where you pay for it?
This Valadich shared that email with us this evening. I did get a chance to look at it briefly before the board meeting. I certainly have forwarded that to representatives of Keith Construction to give us more insight as to what is this about. But it certainly is not. But it certainly is not the helpful option, let's say. As to who is the I, I, IFC? No, I see, it's the first I've ever heard.
Do we have this email?
Yes.
So we received it at 4:50 this afternoon. The long and the short of it is that it just identifies a number of challenges that Key Construction is handling, local projects, Dallas Grove Metro, to see the Chicago project, and also walk through our district. In theory, every contractor could have something similar as their disagreements with, or things like that.
There are multiple organizations like that out there. And their organization may have members, and Key has done a member of their organization every single.
Right, so my initial question, I saw the email, was which of the bidders that we received bids from belonged to this organization because?
So let's, let's see. Are we wasting, are we spinning on our wheels? You don't need a decision tonight. We've got to digest at the very least the email, figure out what's something behind it. $300,000 is a tremendous amount of money. So if we're going to award it somewhere else, you've got to be really, really sure that that's the right decision. Have you guys heard this? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I could just add one more thing. Most of the feedback that all of us received had to do with meeting timelines. We didn't hear anything negative about quality, workmanship, that the things were done incorrectly, that we done over repeatedly, that shortcuts were taken, correct, I'm going to lock it on, we were getting that, because ours can mean deadlines.
It's all deadlines.
Yeah, and that's why we're suggesting, if you recall, at Parker, we have a presence on-site full-time. And what happened was by adding somebody there, we could literally on a daily basis make sure things were being done, it was supposed to be done, and if they weren't, we could do it on the same day.
Adding somebody does cost us more money.
Correct.
Who is that somebody employed by?
Who would be employed by? We have the same deadline as Parker.
How much would that somebody cost?
We put in allowance for $100,000.
How much?
$100,000.
A hundred?
Correct.
So we're not going to make a decision tonight, and I suggest we pump on this thing, try to get some more information and bring it back.
Sure, if you have specific questions, please send them to me, and we can give those answers through Green Associates, but we'll be putting a recommendation on the table.
Thank you. Mine, mine, I'm sorry, where is it? Thank you very much. Let's find out on the agenda meal charge policy. Thank you. So one of the things that we have to have in place is what our policy is for when students don't pay. We do know that basically, money outstanding is a considerable amount of money. So what we can do is just kind of codify our current practices are in the following legal framework strictly, which is to decrease the frequency of parent vacation to drive a little fund basket before they're issued a plus in the account. Currently, if you definitely get certain threshold of fund bank last week after the parents, we may start following that maybe with a little more home calling. For students in grades in elementary schools that three meals can be charged, and then after that, they'll receive an alternative meal. And for students in the junior high, they can charge three meals before receiving alternates, and then after the third meal, the student will receive another alternative meal. We continue to, when we see, you know, not building up, encourage parents to fill out a free lunch application if they are unable to provide significant numbers, people taking advantage of that, and we encourage those who can to get funding then for the lunches, otherwise they're not receiving funding to pay for one. It is a problem clearly from the numbers that you can see. And so, but we are required to actually have policies that we're implementing.
I would say in this case, policy is a non-procedure. We don't have to approve it.
It's not a board policy, so how we're going to handle this on Google.
I know we talked about this last.
I know.
It is ongoing, right, and I know, we talked last year about, you know, so are there definitive things that we can do? And one of them was, at registration, it's impossible for parents to have to at least load someone out on an account, I don't know, an account at registration time, or, I don't know.
Why are they to do that? We did at registration time, we had something on the tip end, bought the feature every parent, we threw, put that free lunch application in their hand, and, you know, sit there and we so please at registration and everything else, but at this point, we really have very little teeth in the mouth as we start going to alternate meals or not.
I kind of remember you saying that we didn't have the action count, right? But number six, three is essentially if six meals don't keep them at time, the administration was obviously thinking that would continue to be. We're still, what kind of do alternate ones that pay by? Six, eight, but after essentially six meals.
It comes down to our risk to manage that balance. Realistically, in my past experience out of that $17,000, even with aggressive targeting, maybe it gets down to ten. And we just have to write that off, and then it will build. So whether we continue to, we can continue to provide meals directly. We should have to know that, so that as we're looking at our accounting, when I see a balance over $17,000, it sends a red flag. So we just want to be very clear about our product, about providing meals. Again, we provide alternates, or we just have to, I'm just showing my review again, and then account for it properly.
Does this number grow, more in, where we were with the timeline?
Well, since it's time last year, remember, we'll write off the eight graders and others will come back on the floor. It's probably been hovering around, because it'll take a while.
Is there, and I seem to remember this conversation last May, that we looked into, possibly, you know, asking parents if they're getting a prepay, only because I know that, you know, I have, you know, when I go through easy pass, you know, my memory express card, you know, that's 50 bucks in the balance, that, you know, goes through there, it doesn't auto think. Is that something that would be feasible, you know, if you could put out there?
My understanding is there is a way to have, against what sort of else have they automatically get parents accounts? Of course, they would have to sign up for that first off, and, you know, and be comfortable providing the account permission, et cetera. And we would probably have to make it to the credit card company to be able to do that. I mean, it's an option, I mean, to look at, again, it would be up to parents to willingly, you know, put that out there. And I guess it's not as the force or required.
Sure. I know that for my household, I would, that's definitely, you know, and I think that for a lot of people, and somebody mentioned this last year, that, you know, if you're not paying attention to it, that you need to turn around like, oh, I owe a lot of money to the school that buys my kids to eat chocolate notes, or whatever it was. So I don't think it's a matter of, I've got an extra Cheeto bag, you know, I can pay for it.
No, again, we're, we are doing it on blast.
So essentially, it's get a week, once for the six to eight graders, they get a week of meals. So during that time, let's hypothetically, so real issue, is that enough time for a parent to come in and say, yeah, I do need help, you know, I need to fill out the paper, is that enough? I don't know what the process is for the paperwork.
We have the application online, we can read out those, we can get to the parents, and we do send them out. To turn it back around to us, we'll turn it around in a day's time. It's just kind of a thing. So is six days enough? Absolutely. All eight.
So you're saying, make sure there's a buffer between, you know, fills out the parent's lunch application, and hearing, yes, you're reviewing, not reviewing, of course, that.
I mean, we could also put it into effect, so you know that we have the application and that we don't have the change of line, so we have a chance.
Any other questions, if you have thoughts, let us know. We'll keep coming back to this, especially with the balances and measure of progress.
Next item, priority two, E-Rate items.
Come on up. Could you pull up the board real quick? You guys hold some phones? You're helping pay with it. It's important, sorry, you. I'm starting. But I'd like to share some background information about the E-Rate program. It's a federal program that's regulated by the SEC, federal open conditions, where it does, it helps schools and libraries get funding for high-speed internet and telecommunications. So with that in place, every year, I go out and file for everyone, which is our high-speed internet, our infrastructure backbone, and also our wireless circuits and everything. And every year, we get about $240,000 check from the E-Rate program. So the reason why I'm coming to you tonight is to see about one of the fifth report, PEG work two by, which with current assessments right now, our backend infrastructure is approaching six, seven years old on some of the equipment and their end of life right now. So what the program enables us to do is get equipment, go out for a dating process, then the district pays a 4% of it, we recover 60% of that. And so with that, I mean, with the dating, I plan to do that over the summer, or during summer classes. I mean, I do want to, please, if you go, look at your cell phone bills, other charges, it's a federal universal charge on it, like $2.
That wasn't a mystery on charge.
Yeah, it's two dollars, it's $2, it's $8. Every year, the E-Rate program is back about $300,000. But to use that money to approach back to the schools and libraries that have issues and are under control, we're at 60% right now.
And this is actually a very complex, it covers three fiscal years. It is, this isn't just a normal grant to apply for. So kudos to Tony and his department for keeping up with all of the paperwork that we've done in the past, and appreciate the challenges that we face. It's very important for the board that we have to be, our stuff is at end of life, we have to replace these assets no matter what, so I'd like to hear your advice.
Are there any questions? Are you going to be needing help from us today?
I would stop at that time, if you were to have a reminder, what would we do?
Thank you.
Next item, five lab data warehouse.
Certainly. We talked many times tonight, especially about the voice data, I don't want you to know exactly where we are, but identifying benchmarks and ways to measure our progress only against ourselves, which are also the next districts with San Pablo, other schools, et cetera. We're bringing tonight an opportunity to look at five lab data warehouses, my forecast five, you might recognize the name, we currently use them to track all our financial data. So when, bring reports for the levy or the budget, most of those, if not all, have been created in this software. This is the academic side of it, it is fairly new, there's probably two to three districts who are currently implementing it in Illinois. But the work that they're doing is really exciting, they have an opportunity to head out to their conference, a national conference, Annabelle, Fran and I, it was held in Schaumburg, just to get an idea of the software and the capabilities. This is exactly what we need. We can track every indicator possible that we can generate and track in our student information system in this software, and then run any report based on any indicator. So students, programs, if we can measure it effectively, we can run reports on it. And the timeline would be to, we'll set up this until we're ready to take action. Once we take action, we'll start building our data set, create a massive spreadsheet with both vertical and horizontal indicators. We'll have to adjust our student information system, we'll have to upload the data, and then make sure it's accurate. And then once we have that, part of the conversation that's happening on the other rail simultaneously will be, what are we looking for? How do we want to see the data? When we bring the Parker map data back, what splash charts are we looking to see? We'll create all of those, they'll auto populate and pull them in our ocean. So again, it's from the district level to the school, to the classroom level, to every different layer that we can think of, we'll have an opportunity to measure effectively. And then it becomes, how sophisticated are we at using the data? Are there any questions based on the report, the sample charts?
So then, you would be able to input data at any time? Is that practice, the administrator would be able to, or whoever you task with inputting data? Because we get lots of data, like the discipline data, it's daily. So you have an opportunity to input data at any time?
So this team will work with us to create the scripts to automatically pull and export that. That's why it's so important to have a consistent understanding of overmeasuring, why it's pulled, so that at the school level, they're capturing the right pieces of data, so that our registration forms reflect the right questions, because we'll have to enter all of it into our, into Skyward. And then forecast five, again, as we're building this chart, they're building the scripts to say, okay, you're in Skyward, so we know that piece of data is here, go grab it, pull it up, get it to this data set.
Okay, so, and this is something that, you know, starting March 1st, you can start bringing in data, so that by the time you're in June, and you're headed for next year, we can, we can really look at, you know, what'll be done very quickly, and see it in a couple different visuals, perhaps, and pricing made with you. And therefore, you and your team can really disaggregate this data, work with teachers in most strategically pinpoint areas of need next year.
I think that's part, July 1st would be the deadline, or I should say the target timeline. Yes, we can absolutely look over, do it now, the bill effectively, what we want to see moving forward. Having an accurate comprehensive data warehouse pulls the lever on common formative assessments to the very grade levels and classrooms across the district. Pulls the lever on consistent collection of behavior data, and all these other pieces. So we'll absolutely have a clear model for this, but also where we're going to go next year. But the conversation's about, well, I don't remember the date the Latina's been, are gone. Because the date will always look that way until we decide collectively, we don't want to look at that. You can track historical information, we'll be able to look within the historical information what it means, and the consistency that this will provide, we'll divide our action plans to the level of specialists to do that. And the consistency that this will provide, we'll provide our action plans, the level of specificity that we're not currently able to easily generate without a lot of man hours, moving hours to generate the charts. And then it's may not be how we want. So for example, it would be Haley's summer school presentation. We're building that, building that, and there you have a question, okay, well, what are those A3ers doing? Or what slice of the program is doing this? The amount of time contemporary fill out and to gather separate all of the information was meant? This will do it for us. We can set all those expectations up beforehand, so that when we're gathering the data, the charts will auto populate. But also, the classroom level, the teachers says, you know, I really want to look at the way my students perform on this assessment, if we bring down behavior here, on these particular indicators to camp's point, and I want to know where they struggle. Okay, my kid really needs help on, you know, informational text, okay? We have to, we know that they struggle with informational text, we also have their contest, the NLS score, and we have their backside level. So now to compare our students, we can ability group, we can identify the skills of any way moving forward. Effectively, we'll also measure if we're...
Could we efficiently set up an index to compare ourselves with, you know, Kingdale, Homewood, or, I'm sorry, Homewood and other districts that would like to sort of balance out, understand where, where in this group, let's say, you know, ten, twenty schools, are we measuring ourselves?
I think we want to be very clear about who's in that group and why.
Well, of course.
But any publicly, public facing data, we can pull.
And it would be relatively efficient.
It looks, it's the same with our, with the financial loss, all the public information is on the table. So when we say, you know, what's our tax rate compared to our comparable districts and our general profile band? It's already in there, and it's a matter of selecting each of the components, and it will pull the information.
You mentioned that it can speak to Skyward, right? I think he said that, so, but what about other marketing management systems, or anything else? Like, if you choose to, we're at a Skyward, is it flexible enough? Or would you be able to select one that will match?
I believe it's flexible enough.
Okay.
I agree it's flexible enough. The other piece, and it's not reflected in here, is that we'll look to GO, so they're in the GO, they're next summer. We'll have it built, we'll have all the information there, take, take our two administrators, who may expand it a little bit, and actually sit with the engineers and sit with their data analysts, and say, okay, now we have it, let's start walking through the different ways to pull data, the ways that we may want to slice it to get to the real story, you know, as opposed to saying, yes, forty percent of the kids are proficient. But within that, how do we want to look at this? Since you're, you built it, you're the data analysis.
You've mentioned there are three other school districts that are in the...
At the elementary level, and I'm not, I'm blanking on the other two. One, Madison, and they are pretty far up front with their high school district, which is typically off of, it's higher end than the high school district. So we would probably look to connect with them, do some, some co-learning. But from what I've seen, the types of reports that are being pulled, we just have to determine what we want to see. So what is A3 proficiency? What is, what are the benchmarks, K, three, six, everyone set those up? Tell us what amount of students on track to leave A3 at a level that we're comfortable with. Again, we measure ourselves against that. But we can create that profile, or research, but other districts have done, et cetera. Again, you're limited only by our imagination regarding the ways we want to analyze this data.
Is this something to be then published on our website to say, this is our dashboard for tracking?
I'd say we have to publish, it has to be very prominent.
Do you know if any of the other people that are just pointing it on their website?
I know that a couple years ago, TriConference, I think I went to one workshop, and they really stressed the importance of having a data dashboard in your district that actually spoke to what people were interested in, in a way that was readily able to be read without accountability. Because sometimes you need one with spreadsheets, really late in the...
I would say that several districts are using this as a dashboard, to find the element you want, that's our absolute. High school districts are, are tough, tough. And so, if we need to recreate the wheel, we need to see their visuals, we just have to decide, again, what's most important to us. If we really want to decide that, there are no better goals, essentially. Those are all secondary to what's in your national.
Any other questions? Next item, approval of Homewood Home Rule Intergovernmental Agreement. Now, a motion, please, to approve the resolution explaining the impact of the village of Homewood Home Rule Referendum on Flossmore School District 161. Do you just? Ah, yes, okay, I'm sorry. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the intergovernmental home rule sales tax sharing agreement with the village of Homewood, Homewood School District 153, Homewood Flossmore Community High School District 233, the Homewood Flossmore Park District, and the Homewood Library District. That's what we would be... Can I have a motion, please, to approve the resolution explaining? Chris, a second?
Second.
Any questions?
You know, I just reemphasize that being one of these motions connotes support for the Homewood Home Rule Tax Injuries provision, nor lack thereof. Simply memorializes the payout schedule that Homewood has offered to various taxing bodies affected by this potential home rule.
I appreciate you saying that, and reiterating that we're all very clear on what it is that we are voting on, and what will be in the record in terms of what are, what we are supporting, so. Can I call, please? Okay. Nelson?
No.
Blackman?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Correter?
Yes.
Fourth.
Yes, the motion is passed.
So there's an agreement, that's a source.
Okay.
So we have an agreement, done the resolution.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution explaining the impact of the village of Homewood Home Rule Referendum on Flossmore School District 161. The resolution, I need the motion, please, to approve the resolution.
Salute.
Graves? Second. Dr. Graves? Can I call, please? Okay. Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Fourth.
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I have a motion, please, for the next item? Can I have a motion, please, to approve authorizing the administration to see minutes for the removal of asbestos and the replacement of the ceiling tiles at Heather Hill School? Need a motion?
Salute.
Graves, second.
Questions?
Roll call, please. Simmons?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Fourth.
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda, monthly financial report. It's, it's, I don't know what to tell you. Everything is coming in as soon as, as usually does. What we are going to see now in this next month, is a lot of people starting to pay their property taxes, so I will even told that towards the end of this month, we should start seeing some of those premiums falling in early, so we will see the first installment coming in earlier than usual.
Good report with lots of numbers on it, thank you. Listen, information, right?
Yes.
So we're trying to figure out where it fits, the gender, the level of the transaction, right? Or the information, right? No, actually. Okay, bold, what?
I concur.
Just give us a second, we're trying to make sure, clarify a lot of the motions that I have to read for the next item. Next item on the agenda, approval of expulsion decisions for students 2018A, 2018B, and 2018C. The motion, I will read, to approve the expulsion of students 2018A, B, and C for the remainder of the 2017, 2018 school year, for the reasons discussed in closed session, and to be set forth in the written decision sent to the parents of the students, and to hold said expulsion in a van subject to the following conditions. Student does not engage in any additional serious misconduct or gross disobedience for the remainder of the school year, which is subject to attitude suspension or expulsion. Student participates in counseling with the principal or designated social worker and/or school nurse on topics as determined appropriate by the principal. Engages in at least one restorative justice activity determined by the principal. And four, the student's social privileges at the school are suspended until a date deemed appropriate by the social, by the school administration. Can I have a motion, please, to approve all that I just read regarding the expulsion for the three students? Need a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Okay, Graves?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Fourth.
Yes, and the motion is passed. Now, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Salute.
Second. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
I'll call. You need to adjourn, nine forty-two minutes.